Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Leonard Village Council. Today is June 12th, 2023, and we're meeting at Rowan Hall. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a brief invocation.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. We think that we can be here tonight, and we pray that you would grant us wisdom as we go through today's meeting, and your name, amen.
Thank you. Do we have our court call roll for attendance of the Village Council?
President McDonald?
Here.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Pellicet?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Okay, the council is in attendance. I'd like to note that Clerk Laurie Zalnack is present and Treasurer Judy Vers is excused. The council received the minutes of the April 10th, 2023 meeting. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections? If none, a motion to approve the minutes would be in order.
I will make a motion to approve the April 10th, 2023 minutes.
I'll second.
A motion in a second to approve the minutes as presented. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes of April 10th, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, motion carries. The council has be forwarded an agenda for this evening. I apologize for the length of it, but we didn't meet in May, so we're gonna have to make up for it now. Are there any changes or correct, changes or additions to the agenda? Otherwise, a motion to approve it would be in order.
I will make a motion to approve today's agenda, June 12th, as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay. Counsel, you have before you the Treasury's report. We'll use, we'll do the one from April, from April expenditure, or the April report, I mean, Treasury's report. And we'll follow that with May, but we'll deal with April at this time. Are there any questions or changes, corrections on the April Treasurers' report? If not, a motion to approve and receive and file it will be in order.
I will make a motion to approve the April 2023 Treasurers' report and to receive and file.
I'll second.
We have a sec, a motion in a second to approve the Treasurers' report as presented, receive and file. Questions on the motion? All in favor of the motion? I guess we're gonna do a roll call on that, please.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Pellicet?
Yes.
Kennedy? Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes. Okay. Move on to the May Treasurers' report. Are there any questions, changes, or correction? Motion to approve, receive, and file would also be in order.
I'd like to make a motion that we receive and file the Treasurers' report for May 2023.
I'll second that.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second to approve the Treasurers' report for May of 2023 and receive and file it. Any questions on the motion? We have a roll call, please, for that.
Kennedy?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Pellicet?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes. The Treasurers' reports are approved. Now, the accounts payable, which you'll find on the back of the month of the Treasurers' report. So, we'll handle the April.
The one for April.
Both in years.
They both say May, but...
You're right.
But the dates are correct.
The dates are correct.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll make a note then to...
Just change the header.
Change the proper date. Are there any questions or corrections on the accounts payable for April of 2023? If not, a motion to approve them would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion that we pay the bills in the amount of $8.53 for major, sorry, I meant that, $23,528.19 for general, $8.53 for major, nothing for local, and nothing for Mill Park Recreation.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Kennedy and a second by Trustee Swack to make, to pay the bills for April of 2023. Are there any questions on the motion? If not, we have a roll call to pay our bills, please.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Pellicet?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes. Motion to pay those bills. The next item will be the May of 2023 accounts payable. You'll find that on the reverse side of the May Treasurers' report. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections on that? Not a motion to authorize payment would be in order for that as well.
I will make a motion to pay the May 2023 bills in the amounts of general, $17,762.06, major, $23.13, local, $0, and Parks and Mill, $0.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion in a second for payment of the May 2023 bills. Any questions on the motion? If none, we have a roll call to pay those, please.
Sure. Pellicet?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, moving on now to the next item on the agenda, which is public comment. The Village Council has adopted some regulations for public comment. We ask that you be brief and to the point. Contain your remarks to three minutes, and if you need more time, the council can elect to do that if you care to talk longer. So, anybody care to address the council?
You don't have anything to say yet? Oh. You have something, Moen?
Mowing?
Grass?
Where?
Oh, please, by the village garage.
We're working on it, Cindy.
Was hacked.
Well, I did it.
It was a hack job.
I did it, so...
It's a hack job, Mike.
Yeah, yeah, I know. I was in a hurry, but couldn't leave it the way it was, Cindy. Is there anything else?
The roads.
Okay. We're gonna take care of that tonight.
Okay. I'm talking for all right, too.
Yes.
Did it ever occur to you, maybe up in the DPW, hey, to get somebody to come in? Because obviously, Donnie's not gonna be doing it that often, and I don't blame him. He works a lot of hours.
We're working on a solution for that.
I know as well.
Well, I appreciate your interest and support.
Oh, you don't. I know better.
Anybody else? Okay. Okay, we'll move on then from public comment to new business. The first item under new business is the community decorating, committee request for flowers and decorations, which basically I have authorized them to do that, but then we also have a request for an additional $200 so that the, they can have a activity at the mill in August. So, I'll ask Yvonne to fill us in on that briefly.
This is from Jennifer. They have a band, JDB Band, that we had at Christmas time, and they will play at the mill on August 17th. That's when they're available. They'll play from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., and they would be charging $200. We already have a $100 donation towards the event.
Okay. So, you're, they're asking basically to go ahead and have the activity and to authorize them to expend $200 for that activity. Is there any questions on that, for Yvonne or me? Okay, then I'm looking for a motion to authorize the payments that have already been made and reimbursements for flowers and decorations, as well as approval of the August 17th event at an expense of $200.
Which is in budget, too, correct?
It is in, there was a donation, as Yvonne said, plus it would come out of the committee's budget.
Yep, and the committee is prepared for the rest of the year, although that money was just on the mill.
That's my understanding, right.
Yes. Just confirming.
And we were under budget with the flowers by $150.
Correct. We assumed more, but somebody has a green thumb, so good.
So, $100 will come out of the committee funding that has been allocated, is that correct?
Well, it'll all come out of there, but there was $100 donated to that fund.
Okay.
Yep, to assist with.
No, it was a good question. Okay, so is there a motion then to that effect?
So, I will make a motion to approve the flower purchases, the under budget that was already verbally approved, and also approve having music at the mill on August 17th from 7:00 to 9:00 at a cost of $200, offset by a $100 donation.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, since it's, requires a monetary issue, it's a roll call, please.
McDonald?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Pellicet?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, moving on to the next item of business. Give me a moment here. The Strawberry Festival Committee and the Fire Department have requested that the following streets be closed at particular times on July 15th, 2023. East Elmwood from Forest Street to Division Street from the hours of 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 p.m. Division Street from East Street to East Elmwood Street from the hours of 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And then West Elmwood from Rosie Drive to Whitehead Street from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. That would be for the strawberry derby race. We actually will not put the road closure signs up at Rosie. They'll be a little south of that, but technically, that's the best way to describe it. So, are there any questions on the request? If not, a motion to authorize those closures would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion, we close the roads as presented.
I support.
Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor of the Strawberry Festival street closures as requested, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. Okay, I hear that as all in favor, and the motion carries. Okay. This next item is under new business is the emergency well repair authorization for Rowan Hall in the annex. As some of the council members are aware, because I sent an email out, the, just before the beginning of May, the well stopped working here for the, for these two buildings. And because it was a health issue not to have running water here, I authorized B&amp;B Well Construct, Well Service to come look at the situation, because they've serviced that well in the past, and they came out and were able to remove most of the pump. Part of it did fall in, but it doesn't seem to have affected the water flow, so at a cost of $4,500. And I just want to point out that because of the leaking underground storage tank situation that exists in downtown Leonard, it was to our advantage to have that well repaired rather than to try and put a new well in, because we would have fallen under the very strict well codes that are required for wells in this area. So, I'm asking the council to, I'm begging forgiveness for authorizing it, but I, like I say, it was an emergency issue as far as, it was, it would have been difficult to get this emergency meeting together, so. So, I'm requesting a motion to authorize those repairs so that...
Are they already done?
Yeah, it's all done. Well's, well was back in service within two days, so, yeah.
I will make a motion to approve the emergency well repairs in the amount of $4,500.
I support that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to authorize those repairs. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Do we have a roll call, please, Lori?
Sure. McDonald?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Pellicet?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes. And while we're on the topic briefly, currently, the DPW manager is the only official that has emergency expenditure authority. I don't have any, technically. The Village Council never granted it officially to the Village Presidents, but it may be something we should think about for the future, because it does, these types of things are in the budget, they're covered. It's not like we're spending money that wasn't set aside for maintenance of Rowan Hall or maintenance of the DPW, but it makes it a little difficult to get things done timely. So, just, I'm just throwing it out there, it may be something we want to look at down the road. But thank you for the support. Okay. I've got a couple of these tonight. There was a request, you may recall, a few months ago, of the village about where someone could possibly place one of those donate charitable donation bins, and we said, basically, they're not permitted in most, in any of the residential zoning districts, and if they wanted to put one in a commercial or industrial area, they would have to go to the Planning Commission for approval. But the attorneys did say that it might be worth, and it's up to the council, that if we want to regulate those particular containers so that they don't get, it doesn't become an issue in the future, if there's, if somebody at a store or someone wants to have one and the council or the planning commission don't want to have one, we can, we can alter our ordinance to address that. But they asked me to ask you whether you think that's a step we want to take. It would, it would cost, oh, probably between $500 and $1,000 to amend, to amend the zoning ordinance.
What is the current zone? It's just to go to the Planning Commission and get approval.
Right, right.
I'm up for just leaving it there. I don't know that, I don't know that we have enough businesses to put these bins at and...
Well, yeah, that's why they're regulated as far as, they have to be, come for a site plan approval, so that they can't just park one on somebody's, we know a lot of our businesses are border residential areas, so people might plunk them down near a fence.
And currently, there's no cost.
No, you...
Have you seen those things?
Yeah.
They trash them. They trash all around them. Do not put one on Mason Street.
No, no.
I'm gonna be aghorn with you about that.
You know, I'd have to think, I wondered if you'd be for or against that, Cindy. As if I didn't, as if I didn't already know.
That's right.
I'd say, I'm actually on Cindy's side, too.
But you take, but you take, but you take her point in mind, is that's why, I'm not bringing it forward because I'm saying we shouldn't do this, but I'm saying we could save ourselves a whole lot of grief if we do this, if, if we think it's something we don't want to deal with.
Is somebody currently asking to place one?
No, it was a, a company that, a legal representative of companies that do those.
Oh, okay.
Were calling communities to find out if...
They could meet us on the third, Thursday.
Yeah, can we just drop one off, or do we have to get permission? Is what it boiled down to, so...
And there's no cost for them to approach the Planning Commission and ask for, and just give us a site approval?
Oh, no, they'd have to pay for a site plan review.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
For placement.
Okay.
Right.
McDonald's yard is the perfect place.
Who remains responsible for those things?
Why would you say that?
Because I don't want it on Mason Street, and I can see you doing it.
I don't want it on Elmwood.
Are you serious?
On any of you guys, any of your homes, block it, I'm here.
Okay. Thanks for your opinion, Cindy. We always, we're always glad when you share it.
I guess, I guess I see it, I guess I see it as a deterrent to have to go to the Planning Commission and actually spend some money. So, if they're serious and they want to take care of it, spend some money.
Yeah.
Have less.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
I don't want to spend money if we don't really need to on that one. I'd rather make it a deterrent.
Well, conversely, if you, if you, the Planning Commission doesn't have to decide anything if we pass an ordinance that says we don't allow them, except under particular circumstances.
Let's table it to, let's table it to February, and if there's money in the budget.
February? Okay.
End of the year. If there's extra money in the budget, then...
I support that motion.
Yeah. Otherwise, we do.
Table it?
Table it until like February.
You say end of fiscal?
Yeah, end of fiscal. If there's extra money in the budget to do it.
Well, there's got to be other places to put extra money.
So, that was a motion by, is there a second for that motion?
A second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to set aside this item until the next fiscal budget year. All in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, moving on. We've been contacted, as we were three years ago, regarding the Community Development Block Grant Program. We have to sign a new cooperation agreement with the county that will be, cover the years 24, 25, and 20, 2024, 2025, and 2026. So, I'm asking the council to approve the following resolution. Whereas the Village of Leonard, the Village is a participant in grantee and community development block grant program for community revitalization program, projects funded by Oakland County Neighborhood and Housing Development. Whereas the Village recognizes that as a participating community, it is required to notify Oakland County in order to maintain participation in the CDBT programs. And whereas the Village has also determined that it is necessary and desirable to continue to participate in the Oakland County Community Development Block Grant Program for the 2024, 2025, 2026 program years. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village Council resolves, resolves to opt into Oakland County's urban county community development block grant programs for the program years 2024, 2025, and 2026. And furthermore, we resolve to remain in Oakland County's urban community block, urban community development block grant programs, which shall be automatically renewed in successive three-year qualification periods of time, or until such time that it is in the best interest of the local community, Village of Leonard, to terminate the cooperative agreement. So, I'm asking for a motion and a second for that resolution.
No cost to that even, right?
No, this, we usually, we've been averaging the last few years about $7,000 per year for use in our minor home repair and removing architectural barriers programs. So, I recommend that we approve it. We're, we've done it for as long as I can remember, so, and people, it does help people that need help.
Are you there?
Yeah.
I will make a motion to opt into the Community Development Block Grant Program for the years 2024, 2025, and 2026.
I'll second.
Okay, are there any questions on the motion or the resolution? Hearing none, can we have a roll call, please?
McDonald?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Pellicet?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Kennedy?
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 Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second to set aside this item until the next fiscal budget year. All in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, moving on. We've been contacted, as we were three years ago, regarding the Community Development Block Grant Program. We have to sign a new cooperation agreement with the county that will be, cover the years 24, 25, and 20, 2024, 2025, and 2026. So, I'm asking the council to approve the following resolution. Whereas the Village of Leonard, the Village is a participant in grantee and community development block grant program for community revitalization program, projects funded by Oakland County Neighborhood and Housing Development. Whereas the Village recognizes that as a participating community, it is required to notify Oakland County in order to maintain participation in the CDBT programs. And whereas the Village has also determined that it is necessary and desirable to continue to participate in the Oakland County Community Development Block Grant Program for the 2024, 2025, 2026 program years. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village Council resolves, resolves to opt into Oakland County's urban county community development block grant programs for the program years 2024, 2025, and 2026. And furthermore, we resolve to remain in Oakland County's urban community block, urban community development block grant programs, which shall be automatically renewed in successive three-year qualification periods of time, or until such time that it is in the best interest of the local community, Village of Leonard, to terminate the cooperative agreement. So, I'm asking for a motion and a second for that resolution.
No cost to that even, right?
As always, if anything comes up, let me know. Cause I, I pretty much act as liaison for the council, so.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Thanks for coming, I'm pretty...
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome to stay, but I don't blame you if you leave.
No, I'm good.
All right, thanks Kyle.
Thank you.
Thank you for your indulgence, council. Next item on the agenda is to authorize the money for the Water Resources Commission to perform the maintenance work on the village catch basins and drains. Uh, you may recall that back in, um, last year, we, uh, signed an agreement with Oakland County Water Resources Commission for, um, it's actually a ten-year agreement. And, uh, the, the cost per year is three thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. And that's for two workdays a year. They come out with the tractor truck and clean out catch basins, culverts, whatever we need them to do. Um, we got almost all of them done last year. So I'm going to get the ones that weren't done this year, plus maybe get some culverts cleaned out. Or if you know, if you're aware of this flooding situation, we, we still have work to do ahead as well.
And this is weeds and trees and whatnot that grow to the culverts, that kind of stuff, rocks, debris?
They, they, well, we could, I imagine we could request that. I don't know if, this is basically for underground maintenance. Underground, uh, culverts, the catch basins, things like that.
Like sediment removal primarily?
Right, yeah.
Like power rotting?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, if we have a problem, um, they're, they're, they'll come out and work on that for us.
Sure they would.
But it's, it'll call, the authorization tonight is about three thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. So if council would authorize the funding and...
And that, it is a ten-year agreement?
To have the work performed.
Sure, but it is a ten-year agreement?
It is a ten-year agreement.
I'd like to...
It doesn't fix the costs, it just says for ten years, they're willing to work with us on whatever.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to authorize Water Resource Commission work for up to three thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents for this year, entering into a ten-year agreement.
Support?
Okay, we have a motion and a support. Are there any questions on the motion?
What was the second part that you said about authorizing the president?
Authorize, yeah, authorize the president to schedule the work to be performed.
Okay.
And also authorize the president to schedule the work. Amen, amen.
Thank you. Okay, are there any questions on the motion? Okay, if not, uh, can we have a roll call for that, please, Laurie?
Sure. Swack?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
I probably should have added that we have set that money, that money's in the budget for that one, so. Okay, um, uh, ProTech membership. You may recall, uh, every year we join, uh, the Michigan Municipal League. And the Michigan Municipal League is in partnership with ProTech because they monitor the telecommunications companies to protect right-of-way and to make, basically, keep an eye on the legislature for making changes that, uh, would negatively impact communities. So it's about fifty bucks. It's money lost, but they've helped us a couple of times over the years when we were negotiating contracts with, uh, the telecom companies. So I'm recommending that we continue that membership.
That was fifty dollars a year?
Pardon me?
Fifty dollars for the year?
Um, you know, the, the specific amount escapes me.
Do you think it's over a hundred?
No, no, it's not over a hundred.
Do you think it's over seventy-five?
I think it's under seventy-five, I'm pretty sure.
I'd hate for it to be seventy-six and I only offer you this, you have to say...
I'll pay the dollar, don't worry. Yeah, if we just authorize it, um...
I was gonna say not to exceed a hundred bucks?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to join ProTech or to continue our membership with ProTech, um, not to exceed a hundred dollars a year.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue our membership with ProTech. Uh, any questions from the council? If not, can we have a roll call for that, please?
Hawkins?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes. Okay, so the motion carries. Excuse me, okay, um... I'm going to sneeze here in a minute. Um, I met with, uh, I met online and in person with, um, a, a Mr. Andy Campbell from, um, uh, the, uh, it's a consulting firm. Um, they're re, associated with a law firm. But basically, they give, gave us a free analysis of sewer financing, how it's done, um, where, where we, where you end up when you do it. And of course, if you do it, you have to retain not only bond attorneys, but also, um, bond counts of engineers for, uh, when you actually request the money, you have to have a plan, et cetera. So, and all of that can be covered by, um, financing from the state or... Well, the state has two funding mechanisms. One is the Department of Agriculture of the United States. The feds give the, give money to each state to use for, um, water and sewer projects, infrastructure. But the state also has a clean water fund that is funded. They use some of the money they get from the feds plus money from our own, uh, taxes to fund sewer and water projects. So the bottom line at this point, and this isn't a formal presentation and, and we're not here to reach a conclusion on what we're going to do because we don't have the conclusions of the study. But based on our study, which we're, we're, we're looking at eighty customers, uh, not including, um, potentially the businesses because they could have, one customer is one residential equivalency unit, which means a home is one REU. A store may be two or three REUs because they use more water, et cetera. So if you take my drift, the number, the number of customers may not reflect the number of REUs. But a lagoon system is approximately ten million dollars. And the, um, the mains and the service connections that would have to be put through the community to serve the sewer users would be another five to ten million dollars depending on complexity. So we're looking at basically a twenty million dollar, uh, project, which if you do straight math, it looks like, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per unit of REU. But after working through it with the bank, or the CPA, um, it looks like technically it would be a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for forty years is what it would be for each parcel, each REU unit, which is very high. Now, he did check and he found that, uh, the, that we are, that our median income would allow us, depending on the loan and depending on a lot of factors, they might forgive some of up to forty-five percent of what we borrow. But they will not do that until you have submitted an application for a loan and you have to supply the engineering plans, et cetera. Plus, at that time, you have to determine whether you're going to require, what timeframe you're going to require anybody that is included in that district. They have so long to sign up for it. And obviously, I'm giving you a very brief, concise, um, explanation. But it, the, borrowing that money from the feds or the state, um, it's not like a mortgage, you don't pay all the interest upfront. They, they have what they call a fifty-thirty rule. So the first twenty years, you're paying a, a lot more towards principal than you are towards interest. And they do look to see, um, if the benefit is there for the residents. And that's important because the tax, that was like the state tax tribunal says that they, if you have to pay a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars over forty years, your property had better be worth the investment. You have to see, you have to see that much benefit. And that's a difficult hurdle to, to pass because that means that everybody that would be in the district would need, um, to say, yeah, my, my, my property is going to either increase in value or it already has that value in order to make sense for me to want to do it. And that's a tough, that's a tough hurdle, um, to, to leap. And with, with our, with our median income at about sixty thousand dollars, sixty-four thousand dollars, we're not... We could be tested on that. If there were objections, if people that were in the district said, oh, we don't want it, you have to have sixty, pretty much sixty percent of the people have to want it. Otherwise, otherwise then the people, the people could pass a petition under law against it and it would only, it would take forty percent to, to stop it. So there's no sense going to all that work and all that effort if you, if the people aren't behind it. So what I've arrived at and I can't, it's not an official recommendation, but I've, I've mentioned it before and I think, I think we really need to put this before the people. I think in twenty-twenty-four, I mean, there's no chance of us getting it built before twenty-twenty-five if, if, if we decided to move in that direction. So my thinking is, and I'd like the council to think about it as well, is that before, the final decision should really be from the people, so. So it should go on a, I think we should have to vote on it, basically. Because it isn't great news. The cost is just incredibly expensive for the number of residents and businesses that it would serve. And so that's, that's the conclusion of my report as far as talking with bond counsel and finding out what the potential costs are. Now, this, his numbers were based on the numbers that Row, our engineers, have formulated already. But as we all know, we're in an economic roller coaster right now. So there's no guarantee that in two years, those, those numbers are going to cover it, but...
Just as a quick question, the, the project cost of that would be assigned essentially to that special district? The, wouldn't affect the entire community, right?
Correct, um, the...
There'd be an assess, there's basically a special assessment to your property tax.
Right, um, and I, I can't say, I, the idea wasn't to sewer the whole community because I, it would require a much bigger system to do that. Especially with the vacant properties, it would make those properties and certainly increase the value of those properties because they would probably get broken up and developed. But we're more interested in serving the people that are actually going to need to, need to help because they're either in a, a bad soil area or their lots are too small or, or systems are, you know, we haven't officially had any failures per se. But we have, the county has been giving people repair permits, not new septic permits. Because new septic permits in most areas downtown, it's, there's not enough room.
It's engineered and it's costly.
So we're limping along at this point. But I wanted to give you, and thank, um, Andy Campbell and, uh, the firm. I had it written down here. Um, I'll get the information to you, but he represents, he's, he's a CPA within a bond counsel firm that has several attorneys' names at the head of it and things like that. And they do this all the time, so. And he voluntarily did this, there was no cost to the village for their analysis. And I, I appreciate that a lot and, uh, he, I think, uh, it was good for us to get, to get some idea of where we're going with this, so. Are there any other questions? If not, we'll move on.
Did you miss number nine?
You know what, I did miss number nine. Thank you for that.
For a while, I didn't understand where we were going. It didn't make sense until I looked at it.
You should have said something.
Nope, that's okay, you were on roll.
Yeah, uh, we've been notified about our insurance policy. The, uh, it, it takes effect July first. We paid six thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars last year. This year, it's six thousand two hundred and sixty-eight, which is an increase of forty-four dollars. We've planned for that amount in our budget. So basically, I'm asking for authorization to go with the liability and property insurance through the Michigan Municipal League Liability and Property Pool.
I will make a motion to continue our membership or account, I guess, with Michigan Municipal League Liability and Property Pool Insurance.
Support.
Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call for payment of that? And again, I apologize for that, I do have one, so. Okay, roll call, please.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes. Thank you, council, all right. Um, the next item after the sewer study report was chloride, street, street grading vendor authorization. And on the, on the, uh, on the agenda, I indicate it, uh, road maintenance, you know, or private or road commission in Oakland County. Since, since the creation of that, uh, document... I have organized chaos up here. Okay, um, we have several variations or options. I spoke with the road commission for Oakland County. I had a, a meeting with them and township supervisor Bruce Pearson in Addison Township, uh, about a month ago. And they told me that they were interested in possibly grading and chloriding. The village said that they would get me something and they have not done that yet. They haven't provided anything. So chloride, they're charging between thirty-three and thirty-five cents per foot for four treatments this year to communities, like townships that participate. The grading, I did not get a price. I did have a verbal conversation, a couple of conversations and a verbal quote with Titan Tractor for two hundred dollars per hour for grading. And having, uh, the new company that bought Road Maintenance is called Big Barney. I'm, I'm not sure about that, I have not had the opportunity to speak with them. But Road Maintenance is, is representing them in this area. So I had to go back to Road Maintenance. And they're, they, they suggested that their prices for chloriding were going to be about a little, maybe thirty-two cents a foot, less than, less than the counties. But, but not much, but they do not do, um, grading at all, no. So, um, I did not, uh, like I said, Titan Tractor said they would grade for two hundred dollars an hour and they thought they'd have considerably more time than what, uh, Road Maintenance used to do the grading for, even though they're using basically the same equipment. So, um, I did get a written quote, uh, from Craig Atchison, whose, uh, business is in Lapeer, uh, Lapeer County, uh, for six hundred dollars per grading in the village. And he would coordinate with Big Barney or Road Maintenance, um, for chloride treatment. And any extra grading for specific purposes would be a hundred dollars per hour if, if it's combined with the time that he's already in the village doing other work, doing the regular work. Um, it does not include the chloride cost, that's a separate business. He would work with them to do the grading so that they would follow... He would work with them to do the grading so that they would follow with the chloride in a timely manner. Past grading with Road Maintenance was a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour and it generally took about four to five hours to perform. Later in the year, if the weather was good, um, it might be four hours, three and a half hours, and they'd just touch up. They wouldn't grade like they would have to in the beginning of the year because everything is generally torn up. Um, and chloriding is always done after the grading is completed. Um, and they, uh, both Titan Tractor and Craig Atchison said that they would coordinate with whoever was gonna do our chloriding. Uh, the county is an option. In fact, Oakland County or Addison Township did contract with the Road Commission to do all the dirt roads in Addison, um, mainly because of the uncertainty of whether, you know, chloride would be available, which we didn't really know when I talked to you two months ago, actually. So tonight, I'm looking for direction, uh, from the council on what direction we would want to go. I, I think the chloride costs are gonna be about the same as they have been, but the big difference is in if we have to pay two hundred dollars an hour for five hours of grading, that's a thousand dollars versus six hundred dollars, um, and however long it takes to, to complete grading in the village, the, the two contracts, between the two contracts.
So two hundred dollars an hour to grade was the county?
No.
No?
No, Titan Tractor.
Okay.
Yeah. I did not get a quote from the county.
Oh, that's right.
I requested a quote.
Okay.
Well, they sent us the chloride, the chloriding costs, but they didn't include the grading costs.
Would the county be harder to get ahold of than a Titan Tractor and a Big Barney and these more local guys?
The, uh, Lake Orion, uh, Road Commission Garage, it's on twenty-four, actually, um, they do the, they coordinate all of that. So it's probably six of one, half dozen of the other. The, the county's really hard to work with and what I'm afraid of, it, I, I, they're hard to work with as far as funding, uh, like the paperwork and getting all their ducks in the row, and they charge a premium. Like when we used to have them to stripe our roads, they would charge fifteen percent on top of the actual cost to do the road for administration. And I was the one that had to give up, do all the administration, you know, so, so it's a lot of money when you're talking to, you know, ten thousand dollars to stripe roads and you're gonna add fifteen hundred more to it.
And we're technically talking between the thirty-five cents, I think it was thirty, I mean, we're talking pennies. Does that come out to be maybe a hundred dollars over the entire?
Well, we generally don't do chloride four times a year. It's usually two or three, right Cindy?
If I'm lucky.
Okay. I asked the wrong person. I followed.
You might.
No, but I'm right. I'm right. I generally, two or three.
Two, I would say.
Two or three times, two or three times is minimum, you know, really.
And then my other question was the, the six hundred dollars to do the whole village, is that a flat rate? That would be winter and summer, so in the winter, or like the springtime, we're actually, could be making a little bit, it could be a better price and then later on in the year it does it again, it's not, it's evened out?
The, uh, this Craig Atchison has actually worked as greater operator for Road Maintenance and has done the village in the past.
So he's familiar with how big?
So he's familiar with.
He knows that this makes sense and that sounds like it makes sense as far as.
And I had, I.
I'm Craig.
Oh, Craig, I'm sorry. How are you? I wonder, I wonder.
Oh, that's funny.
I knew you weren't a vill, I was pretty sure you weren't a village resident, but.
Well, there we go.
But is there anything you'd care to say, Craig, or?
It'd be flattering. And then why I just cover it in case there's something you say that really needs to be addressed and it takes an extra hour, it's gonna be extra a hundred dollars.
Which makes sense, I mean.
But, you know, if it takes me eight hours, it's still six hundred dollars. It's flattering for normal. I mean, unless you are down to come to me and say, we need to fix this area, that's why, that's why I put that in.
Yeah. And that's fine because actually that's an option that we didn't have before and, uh, we didn't do some work because just we couldn't.
And probably wouldn't have with the county then. Oh, they were already.
No, no, they're, right now they're out of the picture.
All right, they're, okay.
And I need to get the roads done. I need it done and I need to get chloride.
That's because.
Have you? Of all people you had to sit next to.
I'm horror.
So then, then the chloride option.
The chloride is the same, we have the option. We could go with the county. Um, they would have to follow Craig, which would, could be problematic because they're doing a whole lot more.
Or the Big Barney guy.
Or, or the, or the.
Barney has worked on many of my roads this year and, I mean, they haven't come actually the next day like Joyce says, but they've been in the next couple of days. And I'm pretty sure they would work pretty good with your, you know, request, but, you know, I would start in the morning and tell them to start it and we'd be done.
Gotcha.
So I'm pretty sure they would do it right in the backyard, so.
Even better.
It doesn't.
I mean, in a timely manner. I know they'd do it, but in a timely manner.
So that actually was my recommendation is I, I think it just from cost effectiveness and coordination, I, we always didn't have good service for road chloride because they're right here. They, you know, so, um, I would have asked the council to support, uh, that decision.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
There's something to be said for showing off.
Motion. Jennifer, you were second.
I'll second, yeah.
You wanna third it, Cindy?
I'll keep him straight, I'll say.
Oh, Lord.
Don't, don't take any direction from her.
I don't want to slip by me.
Don't, don't scare him away, Cindy, okay?
Please don't be a long time.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to, uh, contract with Craig Atchison for six hundred dollars per grading in the village with an, uh, any extra grading for specific purposes would be, would be a hundred dollars per hour. And, uh, that does not include the chloride cost. So let's, let's do that motion first.
Separate, that's fine.
Is that good for you, Craig? Okay. So that's the motion?
Yes.
That we're voting on.
I second that.
Right. So can we have a roll call, please?
McDonald?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Pellicet?
Yes.
Pellicet?
Yes.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
And then, um, I'm gonna recommend that we go with Big Barney who, Road Maintenance is the ones that called me back and said that they would do the village at the price they quoted, um, per foot, I mean. So, so can.
So I guess.
So I would rely on him to contact them unless, could I rely on you to contact them?
Oh, yeah.
Maybe before, before you do it so that they know you're gonna do it?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I, I know it sounds redundant, but I just, you know how it is. You wanna, I don't want to have to chase them or you.
Right.
When you can, you can do it from now until July, you know, first week of July, no later than that. The earlier, the sooner the better.
Yeah.
It's not the first day.
Pardon?
We're, we're supposed to make more rain. Hopefully we get a lot more rain and, uh, if we get more rain, I'll be right on.
Yeah.
Because we need rain before we do it.
And I'll have to talk to, um, at some point, Road Maintenance knew there are several properties in the village that don't get chloride.
Oh, that's right.
There's.
Really? There's more than one?
Yeah.
Oh, no kidding?
We're just, uh, sir.
There's three.
Why is that?
People don't want, they're, we're all on well water.
Just by choice.
Some people don't want that spread in front of their home because of potential.
They would probably add to it anyway.
Well, yeah, it's, there's three that I'm aware of, so, but we'll coordinate. I'll let you know.
Get a map.
And if you want, Craig, I can go around with you.
Yeah, well, they had a map for me when I did it, but for them, you have that? I would be supplied with a map maybe?
Uh, they might have it, they should have it, but if not, I can definitely give you one. I can, I can map it out. I'll figure it out. Okay.
Better.
All right. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion now. Did we?
What was the cost of that one? Thirty-two cents?
Thirty-two cents a foot. I'd like to make a motion, we authorized the village president to contract with Big Barney to do road chloride at up to thirty-two cents per foot.
I second.
We have a motion and that's, did you second?
I second.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any questions on the motion for chloriding? If not, we have a roll call to authorize Big Barney slash Road Maintenance.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Pellicet?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Pellicet?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Pellicet?
Yes.
This is for twenty twenty-three, right Craig?
Yes.
Just this year and we'll do this again next year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want longer?
No, it's not necessary.
Years, fine.
Yeah, yeah. That way I can keep an eye on you. Well, I'm just kidding. I am, I am just kidding because as long as Cindy is here, I don't have to worry.
No.
Okay.
But I could probably get out of here, um, but I lost your number when you called me.
Oh, okay.
I didn't put it in time.
Oh, okay. I got your.
That's why I've been trying to get you to call me.
I got your envelopes, uh, with, with your number, but yeah.
Yeah, you can call sometime so I can put you in.
I sure will. I sure will.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
Do you want to bring that?
What?
This number?
No.
No. Do you want to talk to him?
It's on the front door.
Hey, don't, Cindy has it. I know she has it. Don't ask me how I know she has it. I never hear from her.
You don't hear from me that often.
Yeah, and it's usually good when you do, Cindy, so I'm not, I'm just, I'm just poking you. I'm poking you a little.
All right, Cindy. I told Robert that you don't work in the 12.
Oh, you did? Good. I'm happy.
Okay.
I'm Jerry B.
Thank you, council.
Take care.
All right. Okay. Straighten me out here. Where am I?
Number three, old business.
Oh, nature park.
Yeah. I got my news. I lost my agenda, so gotta find it. I said it was organized chaos, didn't I? Maybe this is it. Okay. Um, all right. Row, as, as council knows, um, about a month and a half ago, Row gave us a proposal, a revised proposal from their original proposal to perform the park study. And they have agreed, um, to do that study in the timeframe for completion would be the, by the end of November and that, um, and that they, uh, would do that for a price that I sent you and which I'm digging out now. Again, apologies. Um, that's not it. I wrote it down. Um, okay, their proposal was for thirty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Remember that we've got a grant of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars from Oakland County Parks and Rec, which we have to have completed by the end of November in order to request reimbursement. And so the balance of that, um, is to, I have the numbers.
Seventeen-four?
Yeah. The different, the difference, basically the difference, um, between what we applied for, it included, um, our match to that amount was from the nature park bequest from Sherry Arseneau and her mother, Virginia Mick. And now we're talking about almost doubling that amount, um, from the, from that bequest. That would be the funding source to complete the study as presented at that price of thirty-nine-nine. So I'm recommending to the council that we authorize the village president to, um, enter into the agreement for the, um, nature park development plan.
Because that sounds like it's as good as it's gonna get.
That's as good as it's gonna get.
And it gets done on time, which is sufficient for the grant.
Right. Yeah, and it took a, I mean, I have tried every way I could think of to get the cost down and it just takes more time, you know, like going back to them and getting another proposal and all that. So this is like the third time I've done it, but because we have the luxury, if you would, of having that money from the bequest, and as I mentioned in my email, we received another check from them this year for, I believe it was around eighty-five hundred dollars, um, which, but that is the last of the money that's gonna come to us. But that money would offset, just that amount there would almost cover the amount that we need.
I think so.
So if council would, I'd appreciate a motion to authorize, uh, the village president to enter into that agreement with Row, um, Professional Services Company for the nature park development plan.
I will make a motion for the village president to enter into an agreement with Row Professional Services Company regarding the nature park development plan.
At an expense of?
At an expense of thirty-nine-nine.
Right.
Um, and to be completed by or before November thirtieth of twenty twenty-three.
Right.
What are you planning on doing? Boy, that seems a lot of money.
I'll second.
Uh, so we have trustee Kennedy for a second. Are there any questions on the motion from us? I'll get to you in a moment. Any questions? Okay.
Roll call.
I will get you a copy of the, of the.
Plan?
Plan of the, uh.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, yeah.
And be prepared, just in case. To give them.
Just don't add money to it, that's all.
Forty-six years?
What? No, longer.
Yeah.
No, forty-seven. How do you know that?
Um, okay, um.
Roll call.
All right, so can we have a roll call then? Thank you.
McDonald?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Pellicet?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Pellicet?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Pellicet?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Appreciate it. Um, mowing authorization for the nature park. I solicited quotes, um, and received, uh, and received, I received two written and one verbal. Sunrise Services, which is the key, Kelvin Sutherby, he did it last year for the village. I believe he charged sixty or sixty-five per mow. His price was, uh, he's seventy dollars per mow up to four per month. Ryan Waldo, who is a village resident, um, offered forty-five dollars per mow of the nature park up to four per month. And he volunteered to mow the mill and the trailhead, uh, for gas and oil expense. Volunteers, in other words, he would possibly use our, he might, I'll have to check on insurance, but he, he asked if we could, if he could use our equipment, um, to do the mowing. So it doesn't, you know, he volunteered to do it though, if, if we would do that.
Save him wear and tear on his equipment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but it would address what Mrs. Ashley brought up earlier about the condition or the appearance of, uh, I was wondering about, could that be hayed, Cindy? Is that, does that field too small to hay?
There's too many things. I don't think anybody would.
Okay.
Too many things to go around.
It was just a thought, you know?
It looks like it, was it the start?
Yeah, it did.
You don't want to be embarrassed. There's a lot of people that go down there and go into the trail parking lot.
Yeah. It's lullered.
What's that mean? That that's why ladders look?[1784.82]
which we'll talk about. And then, um, the village DPW, if we, if, if we had, were able to hire somebody, it would have been, it, it costs us sixteen hour, sixteen dollars an hour for an operator, plus the gas and oil. And there's no regular schedule because we, we just don't have anybody that has the time to do that, so I got a verbal quote from Urban Habitat, which does the trail mowing, and he, he never did send me a written quote, but he's, he said sixty dollars per mow minimum, whatever that means, so I'm recommending to the council that that Ryan Waldo, which is RJW Enterprises, I believe, be authorized to do the mowing and that the, let's just, that's for the nature park at forty-five dollars per mow. So let's leave that, let's pass or fail that motion first, and then we'll talk about the other volunteer work. So, is there a motion then?
I'd like to make a motion for, is it Ryan Waldo with this forty-five dollars? Um, and that was the park, right?
For the nature park.
For the nature park.
Right.
My second.
Like, do we have, Leonard has their own mower?
Yeah.
Gotcha. Is it a zero turn or what is it?
Yeah. Yeah. Hasn't seen much use. I'm sorry.
You said it not.
Give me the keys, I'll put it to use.
It's, uh, COVID changed everything, and that's all I'm gonna say. Okay, so there's a motion and a second for RJW Enterprises to perform the nature park mowing at a cost of forty-five dollars per mow with up to four mows per month. Any que- any questions on the motion?
He lives in the village, huh?
He bought, uh, or he's living in Hoffman's old house, Larry Hoffman's house.
Oh, okay, I thought maybe it was one of the kids, I was gonna ask you if you knew where it was. Living there.
Well, there's a lot of kids there, he's got three or four, but it's.
No, I thought it was one of Larry's kids.
Oh, no, no, no. I think it's probably being managed by Jerry, but I don't know.
Oh, maybe.
Okay.
You know a lot.
It's getting late, I'm getting stupid, stupider.
Roll call.
Okay, roll call, please.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Pellet?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion carries. Now, Mr. Waldo and his wife and his two eighteen-year-old plus children have signed volunteer liability releases to the village to volunteer to do the cutting along the trail, trailhead, the mill, and they've been mowing across from you, John. So, if you don't want them using the village equipment and doing it themselves, they may or may not wanna do it, but I would like to be able to reimburse, if they use their own equipment, that I, I have the ability to reimburse them from the maintenance funds for the trailhead, the mill and the trail, so.
I just wanna make sure it was acceptable to insurance for them to be using village equipment.
Yeah, that's, I would, I have.
You'd hate to have an accident and then something didn't get covered.
Right. So, so in the meanwhile, if he will, if he, he's been using his own equipment for most of it, all but one area that Cindy's talking about, which is across the creek, so to speak. And if you, if you would authorize the village, village president to reimburse for gas and oil expenses for volunteer mowing on those properties.
Are they gonna weed whip too? Is that part of it?
The nature park, yes, the, it's not included with the volunteer stuff.
They have that weed whipping though, by me.
He said, his, one of his sons goes with him sometimes and does it, but the nature park, he understands it has to be weed whipped and mowed, the rest of it, I mean, he's volunteering, so am I gonna say, well, you can't do it if you don't wanna weed whip? So it's a, it's a kinda up to him.
Not for sure.
So this isn't by the village garage you're talking? Him doing?
Yeah.
It is?
Yeah. By the salt barn, you mean? Yeah.
He's not gonna weed whip. Well, maybe he can get closer than you did.
But.
We'll know that, right?
Anybody could do better than me, you know I'm not a farmer.
Oh, that was bad.
I just knocked it down.
Yeah, you did, harshly.
Um, Linda, the trail manager and her volunteers are still gonna be coming through and hitting the trailhead once in a while, so.
But that, that's not the trailhead.
No, well, it's all belongs to the village now Cindy, all of that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the lease ran out on that for
Oh, okay.
A few years ago, so.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to
Anybody wanna get out of here today?
Yeah, reimburse the volunteers who, for gas and oil and expenditures, you know, weed whip string or something like that.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to authorize the reimbursement of volunteers for the gas and oil used to mow village property. Broad enough?
Gas, oil and weed whip string, if needed.
Okay. You can ask.
Just in case, if they do.
Okay. Are there any questions on the motion? If none, can we have a roll call, please?
Hawkins?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Pellet?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, last, last item. I'm just informing you that our local road improvement program grant from the Board of Commissioners for Oakland County was approved, and so I will be looking for asphalt millings, and we're, the grant was to try and fix Division Street where we had put down asphalt millings back in twenty-eleven, and it, we actually had been using dirt on it cause it's starting to break up so bad, so I'm gonna, we're explo- that's our, hopefully that's our project, so. So we were successful for that. DPW, the well there, the well at the DPW is intermittent at best, and I frankly, I we can, we can, we can replace the well or repair it, but it's gonna be expensive. It's a two-inch well now, and it's really old, and it's never had good production, at least in all my years. But I don't know if we wanna spend six or seven thousand dollars getting a new well put in, cause that's probably what it would cost.
What is the general use of that well?
To wash the equipment down and stuff, especially, not so much in the winter, but in the spring and fall when the roads get muddy and, you know, the stuff like that. We power wash them.
And there's no better place to do that?
No, we do, we just do it on the apron of the DPW, and the only other well that the village has is at the annex here, and we can't do that out here.
That's, yeah, just confirming.
Is it the well, is it the pump, like the point, does it just not produce water, or is it the pump failing, or do we know?
Well, I didn't even call the well guy. Um, to me, Alex, if, if you turn it on and it runs, it will build, gradually build up pressure. The moment you open up the faucet, it, it, it's gone, it just disappears, so.
So it's a pump.
I didn't wanna call him if I didn't know what I was gonna do. So.
Them coming out is no cost, right?
Well, there would be a cost, like even if they do an inspection on it.
Oh, cause they do a four inch.
So if you call B and B, they'll call like A and A, I think it is, believe it or not, ironically. And then, cause it's, uh, the A and A guy specializes in two-inch wells, ask me how I know.
Yeah, well, that's what happened here too.
Yeah.
Uh, it's a four-inch well at, at the first, at the old fire station, but the new truck, the new, the four-inch well guy didn't have the right equipment to pull that pump out. It took so much pressure, I guess, so the other, he called that other guy in, which probably explained why it was so expensive.
What's the cost of the inspection then approximately?
I don't know, like when they came out, I just ended up paying like twenty-five hundred bucks to get my pump replaced, and they did a lot, they did a lot of work for.
They eat, they'll eat it if they get the job, if you don't give them the job.
I mean, I don't see going with somebody else as soon as they're here, cause they are, it is a specialty thing, you're not gonna find.
You know, they do, they're quick to help us, quite honestly, and that's, that's worth something as well.
But I guess I'd rather see them come out, at least do the inspection, you're, you know, I mean, you might have to come back to council to get it approved, but.
I guess the way that I'd like to do this maybe is, if it makes sense, is I'd like to authorize up to a thousand dollars to get the well inspected, find out what the, what we have to do to fix it, and then at the next meeting, we could probably come back and fix it, unless it's something like if I would, I imagine all of us would probably be, if, if we needed to do an emergency meeting that night, we could do that, I, I.
Either that or we could authorize, i- if the well is no good, I mean, it's a trust, it's, this is a trust thing really with the any businessman, but a well driller, you know, if he comes and he says the point's gone, the, or, or the the pipe's rusted through, the only, the only option is replacement. I don't wanna pay him a thousand bucks to come and tell me that and then have to go back.
Understood, but that's what I'm saying, if we even had to do a special meeting that night, if you authorized the repairs, so let's say it's gonna be thirty-five hundred bucks for him to fix it, then we're not paying that thousand dollars into the inspection, we're paying the thirty-five hundred to fix it. So.
I, I, that, that's more palatable than just having them come and inspect it.
They don't apply that thousand dollars towards later, the repairs?
Well, not.
No, because they take it apart and put it back together.
Oh, they get to.
Yeah, so really, I guess really to find out what the problem is, if it's gonna be the pump, so like, the reason I say that is where my well went bad is I had the, a deep well jet, and the, the adapter where it was pushing the water back down to pull it up, there was actually a cross leak between the two pipes, so the pump would run forever, but the only reason we ended up finding that out is because I kept going, I think there's a pump problem. You know, they, they went out and they did everything out on the, the well itself, they plunged it, checked the flow, they did everything else like that, so if we can rule out that we don't need a new well, to me, that's worth a thousand bucks in itself, because if we don't need to pay to get a whole new well, that, cause a new well is what, seven thousand approximately?
Four inch, yeah.
Sure, but if it, all it is, is, you know, we need to upgrade the pump, get a different flange adapter, so like even at my house, they were able to put in a shallow well pump cause the well flowed well enough, so there's a lot of different things that can come out of it, that's why I'm trying to understand. I, I wanna say it was like twenty-five hundred bucks, but that was with a brand new three horse, or a three-quarter horse pump, a bunch of new piping and all the work that they did, and the, the well flush, you know, after all their work, they always chloride and pull a, pull that out. So they're, they did a lot of work for the money, but I, I think.
You guys are in charge, tell me what you want me to do.
It doesn't sound like you could just shut the well down and not use it, that doesn't.
No, because.
You don't use it at all, no.
No, I mean, but it doesn't sound like you could just walk away from this problem and everything's just as fine.
No, it has to be addressed, we need to maintain our equipment, otherwise we're gonna end up eating that labor cost, especially if we're doing stuff that's.
It'll cost more to replace the equipment that's now.
Yep.
I'm not trying to avoid anything, but if you authorize up to twenty-five hundred dollars to repair the existing well at this time, that way if he comes and says you got a bad suction pipe
Sure.
or whatever, then it's not like, I mean, it's still a lot of money, but it's not six or seven thousand dollars, so.
Is it in budget?
For maintenance, yeah, we'd use it for maintenance budget.
I guess I'd like to authorize up to three thousand dollars to repair the well at
Keeps growing.
The, the.
And then if it goes over, then you have a special.
Yeah, I can't do it if I don't have your authority, over three thousand, so.
Is that a good amount to cover most of?
Well, I Yeah, I, I don't know what it might cost, cause I don't know much about the well there, I mean, if it's an in-pipe well, is it, you know, external?
It's outside the building, it's not in the building, that's all I can tell you. But I don't know if there's a minor, it's a shallow well pump, it's a shallow well, so. But I don't know, I mean, it's got a shallow well pump, but I don't know if it's a jet pump, I don't know if there's, you know.
Yep.
Authorize up to three.
Yeah, and I guess
What's your motion, Alex?
I have authorized up to three thousand dollars to repair the well, and if he comes out and he comes back and says, you know, thirty-five hundred, let's get everyone on the phone and we'll all just.
We'll just meet at the.
We'll do what we have to do. Let's get it fixed.
My second.
I don't wanna screw around.
Yeah.
So we have a motion by trustee Kennedy, a second by trustee Swack to authorize up to three thousand dollars for the DPW well repair. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Pellet?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that, Alex.
Yep.
I did report, uh, the tractor, uh, tractor, uh, gondola hose has been replaced. So that's, that's been back in action for a while. For the president's report, I had no FOIA requests, and we had no, uh, block rate requests for assistance on ordinance enforcement. The village building official went and looked at forty-two eighty-five forest, he witnessed the hole in the roof, he, uh, could not determine how much damage interior there might be. The attorneys wanna know if we want to authorize them to get a entry onto the premises from the courts, in other words, you know, we have, what would we need to do so that our building official could actually look in the house and see what's going on?
This is to be a condemned status?
Well, we would call it a hazardous building, and then, yeah, it could be everything from condemnation to maybe it would be the spur that would finally get them to do some, force them to do something.
It's not inhabited.
Pardon?
It's not inhabited?
No, um, they, they, all, the only thing they do, Cindy, right now is they send a check to the county, they're two years, two years behind with their taxes, and they stay there, they just send enough each year to so that that doesn't go up for tax sale.
Okay, I'll have to look next to them.
So I, I'd like to know from the council if you want me to authorize them to pursue that.
Yep.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, do we need to authorize any money for this, for that?
It would come out of our legal fund, but I don't know how much it might cost.
We're gonna spend that money fighting it anyways, so it's.
Yeah. I'd rather, honestly, I do get, I, I, I get a lot of criticism over it, that may or may not be due or undue, but it's a lot, it's gonna cost us a lot of money.
What is the, do we know what happens if it did get condemned status? Then what?
Well, well, what happens is, is once we get access and can demonstrate or can prove that it is uninhabitable and not repairable or not at the, not worth the expense, then we would have to go to the court and make the argument that, you know, that it's a hazardous building and has to become down. Um, before that happens, we have a building construction review board that's the same as the one that, the township, same members as the township, and they would have to meet with the building official, and he would tell them that, from his perspective, the building isn't salvageable or whatever, and then, and then, then you can take it, take it to court, so.
And what is the outcome of the court, and it, does it, now we have to pay to level it, and then it goes on to their taxes?
Well, that would be, that would be, if, if they don't respond at all. Well, that would be, that would be, if, if they don't respond at all to the, to a court case, um, then yeah, we would, we would, unfortunately, we'd have to pay to remedy the situation. And whether the land is worth, whether that piece of vacant land is worth the amount of money that it, the lien would be on it is.
Could it be a prescribed burn? Could it be a test house?
Test house for the.
No, that's, that's funny, but it's not.
It's not funny.
Usually, usually they, nowadays, they, they don't like to burn the shingles. So if, if the house were stripped, they, they, they might consider that, but I don't know. It's pretty close to that house next door, I don't know if they could do that. It's really close.
It's a good test, it's a very good test.
But it certainly could be an option, you know?
I'm just trying to find all the money that's involved, I don't want to take on something that's too much.
And I can't tell you, but I'll, it's gonna be in, it'll be several thousand. By the time, by the time you do the, we're, we're probably spend, uh, money just to get in, to get a look at it. We'll have to pay the building official, you know, they, they don't do that for free. The building official then will have the, the building, uh, board would have to then, uh, meet. And whatever direction they gave or got, um, and then we, then we'd go into court with that and have to make the case under our ordinance that, um, it's either abandoned and, and unsalvageable and, you know, who knows?
So the owners of the house and the property, uh, if they're contacted, they're not responsible for any of this?
They don't respond.
They don't respond.
But they are, but they are responsible, the thing is, is.
The cost, I mean, for the cost of it?
Oh, we would, we would clearly, we would petition the court to cover all of our expenses. But then it comes down to, that, that parcel's a half an acre maybe, if that. And without a house on it, is it, if we spend twenty, I mean, that house they tore down on Lakeville Lake.
The court, the one that's.
The one that was wedged in there, um, that parcel's worth something because it's on the lake. But the plain parcel might be worth fifteen thousand dollars in the village. And our legal bills could be that or more. I mean, you just don't know until you, until you get there.
You don't let that go.
Oh, not letting it go, Sydney, but I, I have to be, I have to be practical too.
Oh, I understand.
They've, 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 they've let the grass grow, they've been ticketed for that. They've been, we've got a lien on the house because we, we removed all, I don't know, I don't know if you remember, there was a big pile of debris when, when the last people left and we cleaned all that up and put a lien on the house through the courts.
It is right across the street from the nature park, I'm just saying, I think Jennifer already, they already said it could be a parking lot for it.
The thing is, is we can't have any interest in it at this stage. I mean, it's.
But you have the violation notice in the mail.
Yeah.
Um, and they come back because they keep changing their POI. So they're not, they know enough to move around enough so that the mail can find them. So when Judy has me do, or Judy does, and when they come back, we don't touch them, we leave them in the envelope showing that they've been returned to sender, but they're not getting their mail, they're acting like we don't know what's going on and they just keep moving.
And they're doing this across the United States? This is across the US?
What's even more peculiar is that when we notify them, somebody will show up. Somebody showed up and put screws in the doors to keep the doors shut. But nobody's, we notified them about the roof and no, we haven't heard a thing, so.
And that's been like that for a while?
Yeah. And my understanding is, is that they've been banned from doing business in New York and I think New Jersey because of their business practices. Um, what they do is they buy these homes on tax sale and then they rent to own them to people but with contracts aren't really rent to own, the people are paying and paying and paying. Then when they find out, they're upset, so then what do they do? They trash the place and move out, you know? So, uh, they bought this house on tax sale and did, did exactly that.
So is there something in place so none of these other homes can end up like that? Cause there's some that are still vacant around here.
Yeah.
They're keeping them decent.
No, it's, it's the same scenario, that most of the people maintain them to one. Our, some of our resident slum lords kinda take care of them, they mow the grass once in a while and, you know?
Amazing.
Yeah, it is. It's, and there's, unfortunately, there's more rental homes than, that, that number's increasing. I mean, and not all landlords and certainly not all tenants really maintain them as well as, as they could. So, so I've got what here? Do I, uh?
Now we're going to gain access.
Did we vote on that?
No, Kennedy was about to make a motion, but he didn't finish the motion.
Okay.
To gain access?
Yeah, I'd say, I mean, I think we need to do it one way or another.
Yeah.
Either do it now or do it in the future.
Okay. So, um, motion is to authorize the, uh, village president to, uh,
Work to get our building inspected.
Uh, village attorneys to, um, gain access and assess the premises.
Yep.
There, and the second was who?
I'll do it, I'll second.
But they have to pay taxes on this part.
Any questions on the motion?
They gotta pay taxes.
If not, uh, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. Okay, so the motion carried. Um, along the same lines with ordinance enforcement, as council may recall, I sent letters out a mo- a couple months ago regarding motorcycles and, um, noise. And the attorneys, uh, would, would like to know if, if we want to pursue this further enforcement action on them, particularly to prevent the construction of, um, trails and burbs.
Dirt track.
On dirt tracks, whatever, on residential property. It's more typical on larger parcels than on smaller ones, but in our case in the village, there's a lot more people and houses in a smaller area, so. But they're willing to, I mean, it's, it's done. Addison Township had to do it because they had a couple larger sites that were being used. It's not so much when the homeowners do it, although some of them do get away with, do, do it and do it really incessantly. But when you, they start having friends and company over and then it just, it just gets, it gets pretty bad for the neighbors.
It'd be a tremendous annoyance for somebody who just.
So, would the council like me to get, have the, um, attorneys work on that? Give me direction?
I'm trying not to make the motion, for personal reasons.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make a motion then, that, uh, the village president be directed to work with legal counsel for the village to, um, improve the noise ordinance and the other ordinances as needed to, um, place greater regulation on off-road vehicles being used on recreation, uh, residential properties or vacant properties. We'll leave it open at this time and narrow it up, cause it'll take a while for them to put something together. So that's my motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Yvonne. Any questions on the motion? You get to vote on it. Could we have a roll call on that, please?
Kennedy?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Pellicott?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, I will keep you informed. DTE, Leonard update, you, you may have noticed, there's been a lot of DTE trucks and a lot of, uh, another contractors' trucks in the village and out around the village. The DTE is doing a multimillion dollar, um, improve, maintenance, uh, improvements that will also include tree trimming, but right now they're replacing, um, insulators and breakers and circuits on the old, the existing system. Eventually, they want to go from a forty-eight hundred volt system to a thirteen thousand volt system, which means it will mean more power available in the community for, uh, I guess for electric vehicles and potentially other uses, but, um, it'll also mean that the system will be upgraded. So, this is in preparation for that, they're getting rid of some glitchy systems. They're also, and I think I told the council this, they're also going to install at least, uh, two more circuit branches that will be centered here in Leonard so that if something goes down east or west of us, we, we may, we'll have a temporary outage and then it'll, power will try to come back on. Right now, the way it works is, is once that power goes off down at Beza Street, it tries to come back on once or twice, and if there's a dead short, so anywhere in this northern area of the township, that's it, it quits trying and we just have to wait for the repair trucks. This way, if there's a brake, a brakes or a branch or whatever, east of town, it'll go out and then it'll come back on here and try to come back on out there. So, it should improve things, knock on wood, so. Okay, and then, um, I think I already did give you the local road improvement, yeah, so that's taken care of. Uh, summer festival committee, um, chairperson was here, any, I don't think there's any updates on that. It's, it looks like it's July fifteenth, everything's gonna, uh, come together. Cable commission, anything, John?
Yeah, they brought up the peg fees again, or.
Oh, peg fees, yeah.
For, and, um, Terry was saying that the first, um, quarter, they didn't receive, um, any from us. Um, and then they said that Leonard, it appears, we have received approximately ninety-five hundred less than last year's first quarter from last year and then other, she said they're, her and, um, I forget the other, is it Dave?
Yeah, the manager?
Yeah, her and Dave, they were going to something out in Lansing to go over like, basically they didn't want it to hurt people, like villages like Leonard, but I guess there's some bill that they're trying to pass to where it forces people to pay it, but they're trying to make it so that they, that people aren't forced to.
It's not that we're not paying it.
Yeah.
We have, we have every, we, we don't have an audit every year. Because of the size of our village monetarily, we, we, uh, have an audit every other year. And we're waiting for the results of that au- audit to tell us how much of the pay, how much is pay money and how much is, uh, other funds. But it doesn't surprise me because spectrum pricing has gotten so high that, uh, they're, they're losing, they're losing, I, they lost me. Um, they lo- people are going to AT&T and DirecTV and that, they, nobody wants to pay what they're charging. So, doesn't surprise me.
But I did let them know that we were being audited, so.
Thank you. Yeah, Judy's aware of it, I, I brought it up with her a couple times, John. Uh, decorating committee, anything, Yvonne?
Um, no, nothing other than what we already talked about.
It looks great.
It does look nice, doesn't it?
Flower pots and it was a really great idea.
What was Judy's, what was Judy's idea to get the cinder blocks? She's got lots of ideas. And they were good. I had, while, while I was working on the flowers, people were walking by and commenting how it looks much better up. Now you can see the flowers.
Yeah. Absolutely true.
They look good.
Okay, uh, North Oakland Transportation Authority, um, we, we, uh, received bids for a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar, uh, improvement program at the NODA building. We're gonna install a gas, repave the whole parking lot, um, install gas pumps and, uh, it's a big deal. Um, we are using funds received from the county transportation, funds that we're all paying for to, to fund that. And then, uh, planning commission, I.
Do we need a meeting?
I don't know, didn't Leslie want to have a meeting?
We might need a meeting now.
Yeah. We'll just leave it open if it cancels. Um, I, there's nothing formal anyway. Aliantrio, uh, there's a meeting this, uh, Wednesday. They're just busy with, uh, trail matters. Hoping to get grants and things like that. A village park, gosh, um, I don't know anything going on at the moment with that. And, uh, the county still has not produced a block grant report after what, it's been about a year, I think, since they sent out.
There's still money in there, right?
Yeah, we have.
And you don't lose it, right? We just end up donating it to Addison.
No, well, we use it for home improvement, like, uh, not home improvement, but emergency repairs and stuff like that, yeah. And we're using some of it for the ADA warning.
Yeah, okay.
Your system is still offline, it didn't upgrade, never repaired the.
I mean, as long as we don't lose anything because of.
Yeah, it's just we don't get a regular report.
So you can still put in block grant requests, even though you're not getting the report?
Yeah, even though we don't get the report, the money's still there.
You know approximately how much is there?
Okay, and then, uh, uh, we, we didn't get any, uh, report. And then, um, just so, for your information, uh, there's, the North Oakland Resource Recycling Authority has been created. It was, uh, it was a, this is an attempt by Auburn Hills, um, I don't want to misspeak. Auburn Hills, um, Lake Ori- or Orient Township, and there may be a couple other communities are looking, are, they've take, they've formally taken the first step towards, uh, creating a, uh, recycling and reclamation, uh, project that would serve North Oakland, this, North Oakland County being them at this point. They are looking for partners, but if you're familiar with s- the south of us, Sacra, there's South Oakland, uh, it's a really great facility and it really does, it, it's a nice place to be able to take your recyclables and that. But it's a huge and expensive operation. But, uh, Orient has, you know, two waste facilities and recycling facilities in it. So I'm not sure where this is gonna go, but I think we need to watch it because it's, I don't think it's gonna help pricing at all for, for garbage disposal or, or, uh, resource recovery. But I wanted y'all to know that. And believe it or not, that's all I have. My gosh.
Would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
I support.
Okay, motion by trustee Kennedy, seconded by trustee Swack, anybody in favor of it?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, sorry, it was such a long meeting.